Good evening. I would like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Is it too late to say Happy New Year?
We have a first one.
This is our first meeting. I want to welcome everyone back for the new year and I wish everyone a very prosperous and healthy 2024. I want to also thank the trustees and the administrators for changing your plans. I know this was a last-minute change from yesterday, so I want to thank everyone and also the community. So if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much and welcome to our January 10th, 2024 meeting. Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Middleton.
Here.
Trustee Engenga. Trustee Gail.
Here.
Trustee Lancy. Trustee White.
President.
Trustee Saunders.
Here.
VP Kelly.
Here.
President Kerwin.
Here.
We have a quorum. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children. And accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235 or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff member at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Patrick Flores.
Good evening. Dr. Smith, President Kerwin, the Board of Trustees and Cabinet. My name is Patrick Flores. I am one of the physical education teachers and the aquatics director at our swimming pool at Mount Vernon High School. I know at many meetings, there's always been questions about pool, pool use, so I'd like to take a moment now to explain what we have available for the community. Community swim is available on Monday nights and Wednesday nights from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. and on Saturday mornings from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's available. Entry is $5 per person. And we do have discounted rates for families. Families up to five people will pay $15. And for our regular customers that come, we offer a 30% discount if you buy a pool pass. So you can purchase a pool pass at a 30% discount. So a 10-pass would be $35 versus $50. And a family pass would be $105 versus $150. At the same time, we also offer swim lessons, which is run by Swim Outreach, Inc., and they'll explain more. And also, this is also an opportunity for many of our staff that may be joining the Biggest Loser competition and go on with the Health and Wellness Committee. More opportunities versus the zumba and coming to the phys ed teachers asking for any help on any of this. So now going to pass on to Swim Outreach.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Travis Caesar. I'm the founder of Swim Outreach. We founded it about seven years ago with the purpose of renting out underutilized pool space and offering community programs. And so we've been doing that at Mount Vernon High School for the last three years. We've been offering swim lessons for adults and children, ages from four years old up to adults. We haven't started adults this year, but we're hoping to start that very soon. And we hope to be starting Aqua Fit program very soon. Do we take questions now or programs? Should I handle those?
No questions.
You want to speak about Aqua Fit? Okay.
What's happening, family? How you guys doing?
Mount Vernon Educational Family. My name is Offit Porter. For those of you that might have remembered when the YMCA in Mount Vernon was open, I am a former aquics director, head coach of the previous Water Dragons Swim Club. And I used to run a waterfront Aqua Fitness class that we did at that particular facility. And now I'm like all over Westchester at a few clubs. And I'm in at the newer show YMCA a couple of mornings a week doing my waterfront class. So now I'm having an opportunity to come back home and give you guys a chance to loosen up, take off some of that gravity, burn 700 to 900 calories. And cardio, [bleep], seven minutes. It equates in the water on your heart. Jogging for seven minutes equates to 28 minutes on your heart. So you know, the benefits like triple the intensity. And other than you having to just change and get back into some dry clothes, I think you're going to feel amazing after that. So listen, I really hope that we can have the community come out and have some fun, learn, okay? And then also just improve overall quality and wellness.
Thank you.
So just as an update, the waterfront classes will be available during the community swim hours from 8:00 to 9:00 at nighttime on Mondays and Wednesdays only. And it will be on the website. And more information about the pool is now on our website. So if you go to the Health and Wellness tab under Departments and then say, click on Swim at MVHS. That's a new buzzer. All the information's there. We just have to make some changes on some of the dates, transferred over incorrectly. But yes, all our information is now on our school website underneath the Departments tab, Swim at Health and Wellness, then Swim at MVHS.
Okay. What day or time is the four-year-old swim lessons?
Those are Monday and Wednesdays from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
For the four-year-olds?
Yep, four-years-old, you know. And on Saturdays also.
So if you would like to swim or sign up for the swim lessons, the website to go to would be mvswim.com. That information is also at the bottom of the page for the Swim at MVHS. So all the information's there. There are different tabs there that says, I'm brand-new to swimming, I'm experienced. You fill out the experience level there. All the information goes over to Mr. Caesar and Swim Outreach, Inc., and then they could set up the times for you. And I believe every month, they release it about a week before the month starts. So all the dates will line up there.
Great, thank you. Wonderful. Sounds wonderful.
Is there a capacity as far as how many people can get in the pool? And if it gets to a capacity, is there a time limit on how long people can stay in the pool?
Yes, so pre-COVID, the capacity was 75 people in the water at a time. And if we are reaching an amount of about 25 people for the community swim side, we limit them to about 30 to 45 minutes. Okay, we haven't hit those numbers recently, having that many people in. We're more popular in the summertime, when it's warmer. But also during the year with testing, with regents testing and midterms coming up, we've been seeing it slow down a little bit. Also with the colder weather, some of the little kids are not coming out currently just because the parents don't want to get them with getting a fever or cold or anything like that. But in the warmer months is when we're a little bit more popular.
Okay, thank you. So one other question. When does it start for the community?
The community swim started last week. It started on January 3rd. And the lessons already started last Monday for Swim Outreach. And we're going to see if we could start the waterfront classes on Wednesday, the 17th.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. With your scheduling, have you considered some classes for your professionals in the district in the morning, like water at size or something like that?
At the moment, we are not because I'm currently holding my physical education classes during the day.
I'm talking about before the start?
Oh, before the start of school. We haven't thought about that yet, but that is something that we could visit in the future.
Do you have any senior hours for senior citizens that might be able to use once a week or something like that?
We could visit that as well. If you'd like to.
And what's the reserve lap swim? How many laps, lanes are reserved for lap swim?
There's three lanes reserved for lap swim and then the other three lanes are for Swim Outreach.
Okay, so that's still how you have it divided?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Crenshaw?
Thank you, thank you. Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just going to do a repeat of what I'd said last month because the mic went off and the people on Facebook was calling me and they could not hear me. So I'm just doing a repeat. And I want to start off to let them know that in May of '23, I ran for the school board and I lost by three votes. However, I appealed that because no one from my group was allowed to witness the opening of the votes. However, I lost the appeal because of the statement that this lawyer said that we was asked to go in the room and witness the counting of the votes, which was a lie. They did not ask us to look at the votes. So if they told this lie on me, absolutely, and I don't even make any money, I was just doing this. My next thing is, what's up with our superintendent? Is they lying on the superintendent? We have two superintendents that's in one position that we are paying over a half a million dollars for, both making six figures. And in one position, it is $400 a day, which equals to $8,000 or $9,000 for some months. There are no person, this person is sitting at home making six figures with all this money and our teachers cannot get a fair contract. In Mount Vernon, the average income is $73,000. Mount Vernon is not built for this. For them to make over half a million dollars plus getting $350,000 from the city, it doesn't make sense that our teachers, which is the backbone of our students, cannot get a increase. And a question I have for you guys is that, why when you call the board, do you have to give a topic for what you want to speak about? Is that necessary? Why do we have to give a topic? And also, is this coming to a close? Because this has always, almost been one year that we are paying over a half a million dollars. Are you going to start a superintendent search? If you're not, hire the one that's in place. And if you have something on the one that's home, let her go. But if you do not, bring her back. And when we were here last month, one of the speakers said that you have a lot on the superintendent that's home. But according to this report that you put out on May 23rd, you have absolutely nothing. This won't even hold up in the People's Court. So do one of two things. Bring her back. Stop this six-figure salary that we are paying out. And let's get back on board and let's give our teachers a contract. And what are we doing with the $350,000 that's coming from City Hall? I understand that this budget comes out in May for the school. That's what I was told anyway, it comes out in May. I already have the city budget. I am interested to see how the school budget looks, especially how much we are paying for the lawyers and how much we paying for these six-figure salaries that's sitting here in front of me and our teachers cannot get an increase. Let's do the right thing. Let's give our teachers an increase. Let's stop this half a million dollars that we are paying for one position. And one position make between $8,000 and $9,000 per month. It is ridiculous. And I think we should get back to our basic and start teaching, well, doing the taxpayers right. We voted for you. Well, I didn't vote for you. But anyway, the people voted for you and you should do the right thing. A half a million dollars is too much money. And I'm waiting for that budget report to come out in May so I can look at every line. I'm finished.
Thank you. And that's it for community comments. Superintendent's report.
Happy New Year, all. I want to begin by reading a letter that you could find both on the website and it went to all the emails. It reads as, Dear Mount Vernon community, it has come to our attention that several untrue statements are being spread and derogatory remarks are being made about the recent incident that occurred during Monday's lunch period at Mount Vernon High School. We understand that these incidents have stirred up old wounds and negativity within our community. We believe it is crucial to address the issues in a thoughtful and supportive manner. Firstly, we would like to emphasize that these incidents involve only a small fraction of our student body. Out of the 1,077 students in our school, our behavioral data clearly shows that less than 50 of them exhibit excessive behavior patterns. We want to assure you that our staff members are actively working to provide support and external resources for those students in need. It is our duty to help them overcome their challenges and to grow into successful individuals. However, our main objective in addressing these incidents is to rally the community support for the vast majority of our students who are actively engaged in learning and personal growth. We have over 1,000 students who are thriving and it is imperative that we uplift and encourage their efforts. We kindly request that community members attend school events and offer words of encouragement and support to create a positive atmosphere for all students. We recognize the power of words, especially in the age of social media. The negative impact of untrue statements and derogatory remarks cannot be understated. These actions perpetuate harm to our students and hinder their progress. We implore the community to consider the consequences of their posts and refrain from participating in discussions that further marginalize our entire school population. Rather than casting blame and stigmatizing our school, we encourage the community to come together and collaborate on finding solutions to support the students and family who require additional assistance. By working hand in hand, we can create a nurturing environment for our children and support the tireless effort of our staff members. Our students are at the heart of our community and it is our responsibility to do right by them. Let us stand together, united, and uplift our schools and staff as they endeavor to provide the best education and support possible. We passionately believe that through compassion, understanding, and collective effort, we can force an inclusive and empowering environment for all. Thank you for your attention and ongoing commitment to our students' well-being. With warm regards, the Mount Vernon High School and the Mount Vernon City School District. I just want to remind everyone that the pre-ACT test will be held on Wednesday, January 17, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. This is for the eighth-grade students interested in attending the Mount Vernon Steam Academy next year. Please see the district website for more information. Also, High School Choice Night. Okay. High School Choice Night or Showcase will take place to showcase the three high schools to assist students and their parents in choosing a high school. This Friday, the Mount Vernon Hidden Talent and Fashion Show is scheduled for, that's January 12th, at Mount Vernon High School at 6:00 p.m. The Mount Vernon PTA Council has coordinated this event. The course of tickets is $5 for students and $10 for adults. The auditions were conducted. There will be a fashion show and the proceeds will go to scholarships. Parent Involvement Day is February 12th, 2024 in all of our schools. We ask our parents to go to their children's school to participate because there's many activities that will be in those buildings. So, do you think you have talent? Denzel Washington School for the Arts is conducting auditions on February 10th. And that's at 10:30 a.m. for the 24, 25 school year. Middle and high school students interested in music, musical theater, dance theater, visual arts, media writing, and technical theater should audition to attend the Denzel Washington School for the Arts. The Mount Vernon City School District comprises of 12 neighborhood schools for pre-K through eighth grade and four high schools. Currently, the district is weighing options to remain either a pre-K to eighth grades configuration or create a configuration that utilize separate pre-K to sixth grade, that's for elementary, or seventh and eighth for middle school. In an effort to be transparent and to solicit community input, please share your thoughts and opinion on the current pre-K to eighth grade arrangements. The survey can be found on our district website. And we will take into consideration parent and community's concern. The survey is for staff, for parents, for teachers, and we would like to hear from you. I ready online training is scheduled for January 18th, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. The information is available on the district under Parent and Community page. This is a link to register for this webinar. I ask Dr. Pauline Pierce, her staff, Dr. Beverly Jones, President Kerwin, to join me at the podium, please. Okay, again, good evening. This is a very, very special occasion. And I'm so glad that we have the teacher union here to support their colleagues. Thank you all for joining us this evening. While I know that you are here for other reasons, you could participate in our celebration. The Mount Vernon High School, we're so delighted they're now in good standing. You know, it's been some time. They've worked extremely hard in order to get to this. A couple of years ago, you might remember, all the other schools became schools in good standing. Well, now, Mount Vernon High School has joined the ranks. Truly, this is no small feat. And we're so excited. Our demonstration this evening doesn't really begin to express how happy we are about it. So we have a few things and we want everyone to participate in our celebration. First of all, we have a plaque. You can share the plaque.
Sure. Good evening. Okay, as I read this plaque, the Mount Vernon City School District presents this award to Dr. Pauline Pierce and her staff in appreciation of their hard work and commitment to the school improvement. As a result, the Mount Vernon High School is now in good standing. We thank you on behalf of the school board and Dr. Smith, Veronica K. Smith, acting superintendent. We thank you very much for all your hard work. It's not gone unnoticed. I know sometimes there are he-cups like this week, but we appreciate all your endurance that you have been putting towards the students and your staff. Again, thank you so much.
Good afternoon, everyone. Board, community, Mount Vernon High School special guests tonight. We are here tonight to celebrate Mount Vernon High School. Let me just take a moment to say, I live in that building. And some of the things that you are hearing are not true, like that the Smith mentioned it. And there are a lot of good things going on in that building. I mean, yet to walk through the halls and find students roaming the halls like, you know, what people talked about. So great things are happening in Mount Vernon High School. So it gives me great honor this afternoon to present this beautiful arrangement to the principal of Mount Vernon High School. On behalf of the board and our acting superintendent, we would like to say thank you for a job well done.
So if you're like me, when you celebrate, you usually like to break bread. So we have a cake that we will share with everyone. And we thank you so very much. Mount Vernon High, the new Mount Vernon High School. Dr. Pierce, would you like to say anything?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I am very surprised and very appreciative of this effort to recognize the work that our staff has been putting into Mount Vernon High School and still continue to put in. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge our associate superintendent over here, Mr. Mark Raimondi, who was a part of our team, and our CTE director over there, Mr. Brian Simmons, who worked very hard with the Mount Vernon High School staff to bring us to where we are today. This is a very good opportunity for us to communicate to the community on a whole as to the wonderful children that are under our care. Yes, of course, we know that we have a few students who are very challenging and we are working very hard to find the right supports for those children. But I need our community to support the work that we're doing to continue to uplift our children. We have some very remarkable and smart children within our care. We need the community to remember that our children are our future and that words matter. And so whatever we say, whether in writing or in their earshot, that it affects them, right? When they come to school and they look on social media and see the posts that have been going out, they come in and they express great concern over how the community views them. And so tonight, we're going to use this opportunity to ask the community to continue to support us as we pave the way for our future generation, the future of Mount Vernon. Thanks again to the board for recognizing the work that our staff is currently doing. And we will continue to keep focused and do the best that we can for our children. Thank you, everyone.
Did any of the other staff members want to say anything? Okay, she speaks for everyone. Okay, so we'll take a few moments. We have some cake going around. They are doing amazing job over there, and we just need to support them because it is, it was not a small feat. So, thank you so much again, Dr. Pauline Pierce and staff. So, we're going to move right along to our superintendent's report. We have Dr. Marie Gabotan, who will be providing a presentation on graduation pathway. Dr. Gabotan.
All right, Dr. Gabotan.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, community colleagues. So, today I am going to speak about the path to graduation. As you know, as a school counselor, for me, a high school counselor, it's all about the finish line, and that's crossing the stage. So, New York State has made some wonderful, and has provided us some wonderful ways to ensure our students graduate on time. Next. So, New York State has decided that they were going to, and they realized that many students throughout the state had a very hard time passing the social studies regions. As a result, they created pathways. So, currently, in order to graduate high school, you must earn 22 credit and pass four regions plus one of the pathways. When this first started, there were the original pathways that began with an additional science, an additional math, and additional social studies. Since then, they've added several other pathways. So, added to it has been the humanities, the approved arts, world language, and CTE, the CEDAS credential, as well as the new civic readiness. Next slide, please. So, I like to say, the old way, I take the five regions, I get a regions diploma, or I need the safety net to get a local. The new way is I take, pass all my credits, 22 credits, I take the English regions, I take the math regions, science, one social studies, and then I could use one of the pathways for graduation. Recently, the Blue Ribbon Commission met. They gave this commissioner their recommendation, wanted to prove, I am praying and hoping that some of our students could actually graduate with two regions and three pathways. That's my hope and my wish, so hopefully the state will move that way, because the history exams are very hard. Next, please. So, let's first talk about the career development occupational studies, the CEDAS. You could get it two ways. The first, you take one and a half credit in a CTE class. For example, that's the introduction to computers, that's career financial management, graphic design, any of those courses. Plus, the student have to do 54 hours of work-based learning. So, if I, Marie, took, receive my one and a half, but I have a job in retail at the mall, I fill out the document, we have a work-based coordinator, Ms. Norman, provide me with documentation, take it to my work, my boss fill it out. At the end, I have now the CEDAS credential, and I could use it to replace my U.S. history regions if I needed, or the global history regions if I needed to graduate. The second one is through the National Career Readiness Certificate, but most of our students receive it to pathway one. All our students, whether it's classified, general education, or E&amp;L, can receive their CEDAS that way. Next, please. So, why, why is this so important? One, it provides our students with 21st century skills. They become marketable, they have work experience, and it helps them go back to basic, because they have to have good reading skill, good writing skill, and good listening skill. And as you see from my graphic, the CEDAS will help our student go toward graduation. Next slide, please. Okay. The newest pathway is the Seal of Civic Readiness, and just like all the others, you pass your math regions, the English regions, the science regions, one social studies, you could now earn, with the seal, you could replace his, U.S. history with it. Next. You might say, why civic readiness? Next slide, please. So, civic readiness came about with the idea is that our children are graduating not ready to become, participating members of society. There are four categories. Civic knowledge, that's what they have to take in the social studies classes anyway. Next is civic skill in action. When our student participate in student government, when they help at the poll, when they go canvassing for a political campaign. Civic mindset, the idea that students want to participate in politics, want to vote, want to know about the Constitution, want to know who their local government is. And civic experience, the things they actually do. So, in order to earn the seal, students must read civic knowledge and civic action. Next slide, please. So, this is how you earn it. Student needs a total of six points, but two from each domain. Civic knowledge, they get a point automatically for taking the four social studies classes that they have to take to graduate. If I receive an 85 or higher in a social studies exam, I get an additional point and a half. If I take an advanced placement class, I get a half a point. If I do a research project on, you know, the local politics, I get a point. For civic participation, I am a member of student government, I run for student government, I earn a point. If I do a capstone project, I earn four point. These points total gives you the Seal of Civic Readiness. You could now use it for a region, or, as a mom, I love shiny things, you now earn the Seal of Civic Readiness. Next slide, please. Why is this important again? It helps students be distinguished. New York State is going so far, student who receive the seal and go to a SUNY school are earning scholarships as a result of the seal. It looks, it helps student in their career search, especially if they are interested in law, if they are interested in, you know, building relations, community relations, any of those type of career. It helps our student become, engage in the community. We need students who are going to follow suit, who want to go into politics, who want to be a city council person, and these are the seeds that are built in there. It also helps students realize it's about lifelong learning. Next slide, please. The next pathway is the world language pathway. It used to be called the old Lo Ti pathway, the language other than English. There are seven languages that are part of that. American Sign Language, Arabic, Chinese, French, which we offer in all three of our high schools, Italian, Korean, and Spanish, which we also offer in all of our high schools. Once a student takes the checkpoint B, then that qualifies them for two things, either to use it toward an advanced regions or to replace a regions. Okay? Next slide, please. So, it's just like the civic readiness, the students earn it two ways. To the English classes, as well as through the world language classes. If I receive an 85 or higher on my regions in English, I earn a point. When I take the checkpoint exam, I earn a point. Our students who are L, when they take the nicer slot and move to proficiency, they earn a point. Also, if they came, when they come to their country with their transcript, and they show they've been taking their native language from eighth grade on, they also earn a point. So, there are multiple way, and also, so far this Seal of Civic Bilingualities at Mount Vernon High School, most of our students who earn it come already with their native language with all these extra points. So, it goes beyond the three points that they need, they earn up to four to five points already because of what they come with. Next slide, please. So, you might say, why is this such an important seal to have? Why is it good to have the New York Seal of Bilinguality? It encourages the study of language. Studies show students who know more than one language are more marketable. It also helps people recognize the diversity of languages. It prepares students for 21st century skills. It also helps the school district where our accountability with every student act. So, students who receive the seal, that school receive additional point toward the building accountability for the state. Also, one thing I didn't put out there, students who receive the seal, if they go to a SUNY school, they only earn six college credits. Next slide, please. Our other pathway is the arts pathway. Currently, only Denzel Washington has this pathway. Students take three classes in the arts, either it's music, dance, technical theater, then they do an exam, they create a portfolio, it is presented, they also can use this to replace the regions. Next slide. So, again, it's the three classes, they could take, if I, I'm doing the art pathway, maybe I take an introduction to music, then I take dance, right? Then I take stage lighting. It doesn't all have to be only in visual art, you could mix it. Once the student have these, the teacher track, they present their portfolio, they do a presentation, and they receive their seal. Thank you. Next slide. Okay. So, this pathway, like all the others, again, I say replace one of the regionses. Next slide. So, what does this have to do with the Mount Vernon City School District? Our goal is to ensure when our student enter the high school, that they graduate in four years. Not all of our students are great test takers, some of the exams, especially the history exam, are very challenging. So, we are planning to increase the pathways in our school. For 2425, we are introducing the Technical Theater CTE, so that's the CEDAS. Three technical theater class, the students will be the stage crew, Ms. Norman will be doing the monitoring, and they will have that as an option to replace one of their regions. Currently, Mount Vernon High School used the Seal of Bilinguality. Next year, STEAM will, use, STEAM and Denzel will have the world language pathway. Since now we have a creative art director, all three high schools in 2025 will now have the art pathway. The goal is by 2026, all our students will have access to all seven pathway in order to graduate. Next, please. Thank you, and we'll see you on top.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you so much, Dr. Gabotan. So, that ends the superintendent's report for this evening. Thank you.
Committee, committee reports? Sure, thank you so much. Okay, we start with trustee Gale, if you have any community reports.
Nothing since the last meeting, but just a reminder about the financial wellness seminar that the Family Community Engagement Committee will be putting on at the STEAM Academy on March 14th. More information as we go along, get closer to the date.
Thank you. Trustee Middleton?
I want to say hello to everybody. I do want to give this quote tonight, it says, "The priceless lesson in the new year is that endings birth beginnings and beginnings birth endings." So, I want to say Happy New Year to everybody. I don't particularly have a committee report tonight, and due to the holidays, et cetera, we're just coming back. And I do want to concur with what I heard tonight in terms of our teachers. I do want to say that that also means security and whoever is engaged in that whole group or process, that we can attach titles to people who we say work hard, and they can make more, get increases in salary, in their salaries. We want to do the same thing for the teachers. The teachers should get everything that there's, I've been there, done that, and whoever encompasses that was in that particular group, all of them should get exactly what they deserve to have that they have not gotten. So, I do agree, and let's do it, all right? We want more in 24, 2024, okay? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, trustee Middleton. Trustee Sanders?
Hi, good, good evening. I have a few committee reports. I'm going to ask, since we're on Mount Vernon High School, I'm going to ask Mr. Simmons to come up and talk about what they're doing over at the house at the high school. Thank you. I hear good things are going on over there.
Lots of very good things are happening at the new Mount Vernon High School. Thank you, President Kerwin, and all trustees, and Dr. Smith. So, yesterday, we had a big day. We invited back some former students who came to the school, who had built this house in the, in the late 1990s, when there was a rich carpentry program and plumbing program, and they actually built a, a, a house. We've engaged the entrepreneurship students this year in working with trustee Saunders, Dr. Pierce, and consultant Lisa Yokana, to really take this symbol of, of the power of career and technical education from the 90s that was sadly never completed, and there was really no end to the story. So, just being engaged in the story of it, we thought that, given the district initiative on making learning fun...
The goal is, by 2026, all our students will have access to all seven pathways in order to graduate. Next, please. Thank you, and we'll see you on top.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you so much, Dr. Gabatine. So that ends the superintendent's report for this evening. Thank you.
Committee, committee reports?
Sure, thank you so much. Okay, we start with trustee Gail, if you have any committee reports?
Nothing since the last meeting, but just a reminder about the financial wellness seminar that the Family Community Engagement Committee will be putting on at the STEAM Academy on March 14th. More information as we go along, get closer to the date.
Thank you. Trustee Middleton?
I want to say hello to everybody. I do want to give this quote tonight, it says, "The priceless lesson in the new year is that endings birth beginnings and beginnings birth endings." So I want to say happy new year to everybody. I don't particularly have a committee report tonight, and due to the holidays, et cetera, we're just coming back. And I do want to concur with what I heard tonight in terms of our teachers. I do want to say that that also means security and whoever is engaged in that whole group or process, that we can attach titles to people who we say work hard, and they can make more, get increases in salary, in their salaries. We want to do the same thing for the teachers. The teachers should get everything that there's, I've been there, done that, and whoever encompasses that was in that particular group, all of them should get exactly what they deserve to have that they have not gotten. So I do agree, and let's do it. All right? We want more in 24, 2024, okay? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, trustee Middleton. Trustee Sanders?
Hi, good, good evening. I have a few committee reports. I'm going to ask, since we're on Malvern High School, I'm going to ask Mr. Simmons to come up and talk about what they're doing over at the house at the high school. Thank you. I hear good things are going on over there.
Lots of very good things are happening at the new Mount Vernon High School. Thank you, President Kerwin, and all trustees, and Dr. Smith. So yesterday, we had a big day. We invited back some former students who came to the school, who had built this house in the late 1990s, when there was a rich carpentry program and plumbing program, and they actually built a house. We've engaged the entrepreneurship students this year in working with trustee Saunders, Dr. Pierce, and consultant Lisa Yokana, to really take this symbol of the power of career and technical education from the 90s that was sadly never completed. And there was really no end to the story. So just being engaged in the story of it, we thought that, given the district initiative on making learning fun, that this would be a very real-world way to engage students of today to connect to the students of yesteryear. And yesterday, saw this kind of full completion. We saw one of the former students, his name is Omar Carter, and our former carpentry teacher, Mr. Jim Vettery, and they came back, and the students met with them, we filmed them, they went back in the house for the first time in 30 years. They were teary-eyed, they were hugging each other, we captured all of this. And the pedagogical value of this is that the students in three entrepreneurship classes at the new Malvern High School are now coming up with a new purpose for the house, what I've labeled the house that time forgot. Now, of course, this raises all sorts of logistical issues that when we plunged headlong into this, we didn't know, like the ordinances and the status of the house, the architecture and all of this. So we thought it most important to allow the students to let their imaginations run wild, to conduct, you know, their research on all of this, and to just let their entrepreneurship spirits shine. That's where the project is right now. There will be an event in April where they will compete with these ideas, and we will take it from there. Whether or not we have the resources to actually complete the house, this is all a work in progress, but we're just dreaming big, and we're allowing our students to dream big. And they connected with students who dreamt big 30 years ago, and it was very, very touching yesterday, just to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a special education report from Ms. McKinney Bromley. The Malvern City School District has partnered with Mercy University's Occupational Therapy Graduate Department to address staffing issues, particularly in our occupational therapy. As part of this partnership, Mercy University will supply clinical education supervisor to assist in occupational therapy interns in select schools within our district. Dr. Smith will soon finalize the agreement, and collaboration is set to commence shortly. And one more committee is the IDA, which we have a meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock. That's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Also for the IDA, I asked Rita to give you the package. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, trustee Serena Kelly?
No education, we're about to have one at the end of the month, so I'll leave the budget to you.
Thank you. trustee White?
Did Mike Ragusa leave?
Nope, he's here.
Ragusa? Ragusa. No, I'm sorry. Mike is going to give our report. I've missed a couple of meetings, and Mike has been on top of everything that we have done. So I'm going to let Mike speak for the facility committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So just a few things we've had this last month or so, we've had...
Mike, speaking to the, Mike?
I don't think it's, oh, there it is, it's on. So just a few things that we've been doing, we had all our fire inspections, we've changed some outside lights at Parker, we fixed some rooftop unit at Parker, we've had a safety and security board of ed meeting. The teachers bathrooms at the high school was a problem, we changed all the flushometers, and we have some sink faucets on order. We had a power outage at Graham, which led to the condensate pump not working, so we got that working again back online, and also found a three-inch line leaking that our plumber's fixed. Also, Ben Turner Gym, we had to change some belts, we had a condensate pump, oh, that was at Graham, we got that, we had a three-inch, replaced some LED strips in the basketball backboards at the high school. We've walked through all the district stages and auditoriums with a fireproofing company to look at revamping all the drapes and redoing the fireproofing. All the kitchen hoods have been inspected and cleaned in the district. All the kitchen ansel systems, which is the fire systems in all our kitchens, have been inspected. All our elevators have been inspected this month, actually this week. We had an inch and a half broken pipe at Rebecca Turner in the boiler room for pre-kaid, we fixed that. And also, a three-inch pipe was leaking at Columbus, we fixed that. And we're working on various fire doors and parts for the fire inspections. And that's about it.
That's a lot.
No.
That's a lot, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. trustee Mitchell?
Okay, hi, how's everybody? Happy new year. So I'm also on the Wellness Committee, and I met with Coach Bob Semino today, we were talking about, remember last year, right around June or July, we were trying to get the initiative for that the students can start to, we can start to really recognize the sports that the district does offer. So we started the agenda so that medical forms could be submitted, so children were able to have their medical forms to get them cleared in time. So I decided that this year would be best to have, start having those conversations early on so that we can have things in place. And we should be aware that the district does, you know, offer sports to classmates as low as seventh and eighth grade, so those are the modified sports. So modified volleyball, modified track, and modified basketball are all sports that are offered to our seventh and eighth graders through the district. So I'm going to be having a conversation with Dr. Smith so that we can start getting robo calls going hopefully sooner this year, so that as we roll into, say, June and July, we can already have medical forms in place. I had a chat with Nurse Hibbert today, a very good talk with her today, who is a person who is very intricately involved in reviewing those medical forms. We also, since I was at the high school, I also took a trip over to the turf room. So if you remember, the turf room was a shambles, we had a lot of water damage for over the years, plus a lot of mold. And I've been talking closely with Mr. Ramundi, Mr. Ragusa, about what's been going on. Mark Ramundi definitely had been very upfront about telling me what's going on, where we stand, we're at closing stages right now, with the painting is, should be most likely completed by this weekend, I'm hearing, and next will be to get the floors laid in, which should not take incredibly too long. We also are aware every year that the state fire department, the state fire marshal comes in and reviews every single building, and they tell us what's going on. So that recently happened, and we're working to close in on everything that needs to be done so that our certificates of occupancy will be in place without any hiccup or, you know, any ida. So my question, we had a heavy rain last night, and we know we have buildings, and I'm going to, so I know I'm going to ask, somebody's going to go to the mic, right? How are we with flooding, at this point? I mean, have we heard, I was in, I was actually in Nurse Hibbert's office today, and I witnessed water coming in her office as I was sitting there, that she didn't even see, but it was coming because it's on that side, south, the side of the building closer to Sharon and Avenue, which we know the water collects there, and that's a big issue.
Check. All right. So, good evening. I was up at 4:30 this morning with all the head custodians, we authorized, so in inclement weather, the process is, a notice goes out from my office to all the head custodians, authorizing, I guess, I don't want to call it overtime, but it would be considered overtime to go into the buildings an hour and a half earlier to get a status report of the state of the district. Because if we have to call a closure or a delay, you know, Dr. Smith needs to know that by 5:00, 5:15 the latest. So we get in the buildings early, make sure that the power is working, there's no flooding, there's no malfunctions with either the heating system, the cooling system, electrical system. So this morning, I'm very happy to report that there was no major issues that would prevent us from delaying school or opening school. Now, with the amount of water coming in, in those areas, there is groundwater, you will see pockets like that happening, but we can get in the buildings, get the students in their classes, and then we can, you know, work on those isolated areas to either fix it permanently or put temporary fixes in while permanent fixes come in. So we did very well with this most recent storm.
So now, when we have issues where we have major flooding, we have, we use, between our in-house folks cleaning up, we use a contract company that comes in and does most of the cleanup jobs in the district, that's, is that, they renew as the company. What is it, so we have contract with them? Is it through the state? How does that work?
Correct. So any vendor we use, we use multiple, I guess, pathways to secure work. One of the ways is through ed data. And so vendors, they submit all their proper documentation for insurance, licensing, bonding, they get approved for the most competitive rates, they do send in certified payroll, so all the boxes are ticked for compliance and conformance. And so they're allowed to be contracted to the school district with a certain percentage of approved markup for the product, so there's a lot of that financial transparency. So anytime we do any sort of service, we have to use by law, all of these vendors who've been pre-approved and board-approved and state-approved. Very rarely do we go outside of that unless there's a sole source provider or company where nobody on that bid sheet is either eligible or available to perform that scope of work, depending on the time or the type of work. But anything we do, we try to do in-house first, because let's take care of our own. And in the event that we do have to outsource, it's just something that exceeds our capacity to perform that service, or it's an overwhelming task where we split the work, where our people will handle X, and then companies that are approved will handle Y.
So that speaks also to the in-house work, which, again, I will say, you said in-house, the turf room, all the painting and scraping and all of that work that's being done right now, aside from the flooring, is being done in-house, correct?
Correct, and it's a significant cost savings to the district. So while it may take a little bit more time, it will save quite a bit of money. So we try to do that fine balancing act of the time versus money versus the needs. And so, yeah, we use 100% in-house work for all of the work in that, with the exception of the abatement, which we couldn't do in-house, and then the flooring, which is, again, something that would just be too much of a task to ask our individuals to do, and would pull them from other in-house projects they could be working on as well.
Now, I asked a question about Renew, because Renew has been on contract with us for many, many years. So that would say that they're consistently winning the, winning the bid, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and I know Mr. Silver has explained this in prior meetings for more than a year, I've heard him at least say it three times, this is the reason why. So for us to go outside of that contract, to go and say, hey, you know what, I'm going to get someone else to do this work, we're already contracted with Renew to do the work, or any contractor that we won, that won the bid, isn't that basically reinventing the wheel and causing us to waste time, ultimately? Can you say that?
Ultimately, yes. There are certain limitations, so on the bids, there's primary vendors, then there's secondary vendors. So what we do is we enter into an agreement that we'll go through the primary first, then we'll go to the secondary, and 99% of the time, they're able to perform that work. Now, in the event that they're unable to do so, or there is no primary, or the primary is also the secondary, then we go to the BOCs bids, or the New York State OGS bids, and we can do piggyback contracts and kind of really explore it, but it's, you still have to be registered on some sort of municipality. We can't just call the local person down the street and say, hey, we're going to give you this job because of all of the liability that's associated with that.
Right. And the last thing I'm going to ask is, we know that the turf room has some delays, is there a very simple explanation as to why, because we had a considerable amount of delay in the turf room getting to even the point where it is now? Is there any simple explanation that you can give us?
I missed the first part of that question.
Is there any simple explanation as to what, because there was a delay in the turf room getting done, we've talked about it, and is there any simple explanation that you could share as to why, or how we were able to resolve and get us to that, the fact that we're going to probably, we should be closing in by Saturday?
I think, are you talking as far as the overall beginning of the project, or most recent delay?
I'm assuming, I'm going to, I mean, let's go with the most recent, because I want to get off the mic.
Okay. So the most, again, anything we do where we either in-house it or outsource it, there's certain protocols that need to be followed, and there was a question to the protocols followed and procedures of our in-house work. And so that's the most simple explanation I can give, that it was a question of how that protocol was followed.
Thank you, trustee Mitchell. Those were great questions, and thank you, Mark and Mike, thank you so much. Okay, so I have two committee reports. The first one would be the Health and Wellness Committee, district-wide. Now, we started on Monday, we commenced a Biggest Loser Challenge for all administration, all district employees, trustees. We asked everyone to join the Biggest Loser Challenge so that we could all live a healthier or lifestyle for the new year. We encourage everyone to, you know, to exercise, eat well. I will be joining. The grand prize for the first-place winner is $1,500, for the second-place winner is $1,000, and for third place is $500. Now, every, all employees can weigh in at their schools, in the school buildings, a physical education teacher will be able to weigh you in. Now, we did not open this up to the community, only because it would public cause havoc as far as the weighing, so we just only, you know, invite administrators, staff, and building faculties to join in onto this, this Biggest Loser Challenge. Hopefully, next time, we could open up to the public. Yes, so the public, so we do have an activity coming up, January 17th, where we'll have a Zumba class, and that Zumba class will be held at Malvern High School, and I think is at, is it at 6 o'clock? It will be at 6:00 PM. We are charging a small fee of $5. So we encourage everyone to come out and join us for this Zumba class. Community, trustees, district clerk, superintendent, everyone to come out, please join us so we all could get healthy together.
So that's not part of the Biggest Loser?
No, this is the activity, this is part of the Biggest Loser, this is an activity that goes with the Biggest Loser Challenge. Activity meaning exercise?
Yeah, so people already paid their $20, or whatever they paid, so you got to pay $5.
So the $5, so the Biggest Loser Challenge is $20, it's $20 to enter, that's separate from the Zumba. Zumba is the activity, the physical activity.
The community can come in for, it's public?
Yeah, that, right. Yes, so the Zumba is open to the public.
Gotcha.
Yes, and the fee, again, as I said, it's $5. Onto the Budget Committee. So everyone, I encourage you, all staff, administrators, please join the Biggest Loser. You see, we giving $1,500 for first place. Onto the Budget Committee. During the community report, one resident did ask, what, where is the $350,000 that we are collecting from the city, where is it going? I have to say that that money is going to our fund balance. To date, we have collected $4,900,000 from the city for back taxes, and it's all going to our fund balance. I know one, as I said, one resident did ask, where is that money going? So during the budget, during the budget meeting, we also discuss a proposal for retirement incentive for employees. This will be presented to the trustees before we roll it out, before HR and the business office roll it out. The trustees will get a better understanding of the incentive, and then we will, you know, then roll it out to all the employees that qualify or who want to take advantage of the early incentive, early retirement incentive. We received a building condition survey from our engineers, and I have to say that all across the board, all 16 schools, are in dire need of repair, repairs that needed attention, immediate attention. And of course, the committee explored, we spoke about the budget where this money is going to come out from, in the budget, we don't have... In the budget, we don't have any money for capital nor extra for capital project. So we are tossing around the idea of perhaps a repair bond in the amount of $50 million. That, again, we will be discussing this with the trustees. Mr. Silver spoke to the bond attorney. And he said that there would not be any tax increase with this bond if we did apply for the $50 million bond. Now, again, as I said, there is no extra capital project money in the budget. And so we need to fix or repair the school buildings as soon as possible. Also, to date, we have collected, the school district has collected $89 million in taxes from the community. I wanted to encourage everyone and thank everyone for paying their taxes on time so far. And that, I think, concluded my, concludes my committee report. Thank you. Sure.
Of the 4.9 million that we've collected from the city, it was going back to the fund balance. For those of us that may not understand what that means and we're listening in, because the question, you would imagine, okay, we got 4.9 million. Remember, we had somebody speak tonight and said, oh, we can't give money to the teachers. Can we talk to exactly what it means to say that that 4.9 million is going back to the fund balance? I think Mr. Silver probably would be.
So Mr. Silver could answer that. So the fund balance is basically what we call the savings. Yes. So Mr. Silver, if you could elaborate on that, please.
Good evening. Any extra money that we get, whether it be from the city, from the state, from any source that we did not anticipate, becomes a part of our savings or our fund balance until it is committed and spent. So this tax money that we've received, we are investing at a very high rate of interest. We will be getting very good interest as we did once before. You may recall, we invested, I think, $38 million last year. We're investing $20 million. And a part of what we're investing now is that tax money. And so that will be working for us while we're not using it. And so it's just a part of our savings. It can be used for what's called unanticipated ordinary contingent expenses if we wish to use some of that money. But right now, there is no plan to do that, and that money is just being saved.
And I have only one other question.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, this is.
You had the mic for 20 minutes prior.
This is just related to the statement about the bond. And again, the repair bond, I noted is very much needed. We've been walking through these buildings. I've been in these buildings, walking around for the past four years now, so I know. How do we explain to our taxpayers the need for this bond in relation to a question that's been asked many, many times or a statement that is denied? Are we, when compared to our neighboring school districts, are we truly top-heavy administration-wise as far as salaries? Is that really an issue? Is that a thing? Are we truly top-heavy? I don't expect you to give me that answer right now. But I would really hope that maybe we can see some sort of report that says, hey, this is what we look like as far as administration salaries as compared to our neighboring districts of the same size, the Big Five or whatever, so that we can help to be able to explain and paint that picture that says, yes, we are, and no, we're not, and here's what we're doing to fix it. Is that something we can work on?
So yeah, we could work on that. We will review that and get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Carwin? I'm sorry. So you talked about the bond for repairs. So we know that $50 million is not a lot of money to repair. So we're going to talk about the level of repair, what level we're doing the most important repairs, like the level threes or fours? Is that right?
Right. So, no. So Mr. Silver, if you could speak on that.
We'll be talking about doing what's called priority ones and twos.
Level ones, yeah.
Level ones and level twos. And when we have the opportunity, hopefully tonight, we'll be discussing that. We also have a list prepared by the architect of recommended repairs from priorities one and twos for each building. It's listed by building and what those repairs would be. And we have totals for each building as well that I will have for you when we discuss the legal part of that.
Let the universe know. And remember, all of our buildings are close to 100 years old or older. So, I mean.
Yes, this $50 million will go somewhere. We will take care of all what's called life safety repairs. The buildings will be safer, but the buildings will not be done. Yes, it's going to require more. And this will take some five years to do this. And then we'll see where we are in five years about doing something more. But right now, we do know that there's $309 million in repairs that need to be done. But many of those are way on the outside, that don't have to be done, but we have to do something. You should know that our property is worth almost a billion dollars, our schools.
Thank you so much. That concludes committee report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any old business? We go on to our resolutions. Cavemotion for 5.1, Human Resources 97A Certified. Motion. Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
I just want to welcome the return of Tori and Kendall as a supervisor, special ed. Welcome back.
All right, Tori and.
Cavemotion for 5.2, Human Resources 97B Classified. Motion. Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 6.1, Authorization to Add Substitutes for the Smart Scholars Program for the 2023-2024 School Year. Smart Scholars at Denzel Washington School of the Arts. Motion. Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 6.2, Authorization to Approve Hiring Additional Extended Learning Opportunities Staff District-wide. Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 6.3, Authorization to Sign Memorandum of Understanding with Girls Inc. of Westchester County Programming. Motion. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 6.4, Authorization and Hiring of Staff to Produce the Stage Musical Annie Jr. at Denzel Washington School of the Arts. Motion.
Second question.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So, just so I can understand, this is not, this is a major production. This is not like a play or a show that any one of our elementary schools put on, right? This is something much bigger on a grander scale. Now, I know also that normally Denzel Washington charges a door charge. Where, who accounts for that money that's collected at the door? Because we're paying $71,000 for this production, right? That's a lot of money that's outside of salary. So the question has been in the past, we have schools that put on incredible performances and that's within their salary, right? We understand that this is different. This is huge. This is a Denzel Washington thing. We know it's going to be major. Who's accounting for the money that they pull in between snacks and sales, store sales? Who's accounting for it? And does any of it come back to the district at all? How does that work?
So Denzel Washington has an activity account, which is one of the extracurricular activity accounts that each school has. I'm sorry. It's not a part of the budget. Extracurricular activities are school-operated funds. It is audited by the auditors as part of the extraclassroom. Just so you know, we're engaging BOSI's to help us to have a uniform procedure for accounting in those departments. So that extracurricular program is audited by the auditors at the end of the year, just like every other student activity account is at all the schools. So it is accounted for.
Right. Now, does the district see any of those funds? What are those funds used for at the door?
And all the activity funds are the same. The activity advisor is supposed to be involved with the students. The students are supposed to be helping to run the fund, make the decisions, pay the bills. They're supposed to be learning from these student activities. And so those monies do not come back to us. They stay in the account and they're used as the activity advisor, at the activity advisor's discretion with the help of the students. And they use it as they wish, and it is accountable to us on a monthly basis. And then the auditors look at it once a year, which they just did.
Okay, thank you. That's my one minute.
So I know one question, Trustee Kelly and I had when we reviewed this resolution is that we wanted to know if the students were going to be involved as opposed to outside people or professionals that's going to just come in and work and the students don't get the opportunity to work with, you know, the professionals. So we were told that the students will get the opportunity and the students will be participating in the production. You know, we want these students to be the consultants coming back, going on, to be on Broadway and to go on to be in the musical and performing industry. So one of the main concern, as I said, was we wanted to know if students were going to participate. And we were told, yes, the student's going to be participating in the production. Because we don't want to pay all this money for outside consultants and the students doesn't get that opportunity and they don't learn anything, right? It defeats the purpose to have in production like this. So, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 6.5, Authorization for Mount Vernon Steam Academy Students to Participate in the ACE Mentoring Program at Manhattanville College. Motion. Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 7.1, Approval of Student Services, Pupil Personnel Services, Memorandum Number 11, dated January 10, 2024. Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
I have a question. The Public Prep Charter, is there an invoice attached to these students that we're paying from the other charter schools? We have an invoice that we're paying the charter schools? Did they invoice us?
Yes. So when we receive the invoice, I also receive the attendance for the students, their address. So any student that we have a question, we do send our district attendance teacher to double-check that that student belongs to Mount Vernon. So yes, we do. We get the invoice first, but I also get the attendance from the school.
So you don't need to attach the invoice to the resolution?
I could add it if you like. But there's things added to executive content in here as well. It should be there.
Yeah, I saw the names, but I didn't see like an invoice from the school.
So you actually want the invoice itself?
Well, I like it.
Okay. So I will add it for this particular one. I will give it to Rita to add.
Thank you.
Are we pulling that? I'm sorry, are we pulling that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 7.2, Authorization to Enter into an Agreement with the County of Westchester and Westchester Institute for Human Development. Motion. Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Yeah, I have a question. Could you just tell us what this is about?
I don't know if you guys remember, a couple of months back, Dr. Smith announced that we're going to have a partnership with Department of Social Services to provide us with a liaison for our students, especially those which we have to call Child Protective Services. So this has been the background work. In the meantime, since this has not been agreed upon, I'm hoping tonight, they've overextended themselves. So they've been calling their core system unit whenever we have students that have severe issue, especially those who are overage that normally CPS would not call, we've been utilizing their services. So this person will be housed, Edward William, and also Ed Leadership, to service a lot of our students, those where we get the highest volumes of call, where we have to call Child Protective Services. What makes it so wonderful is this is about providing parents with resource. That person will liaison with us and liaison with our parent to provide them with resources that the county has. Maybe it's helping them obtain food, helping them obtain counseling services. So I'm really excited to start this partnership because it will benefit our students.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Carwin.
Great opportunity.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 8.1, Appointment of Replacement Bus Monitor at Nelson Mandela Dr. Hosea Zalikoff School. Motion. Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 9.1, Approval to Rescind Resolution 5.4, dated May 5, 2020, 10-year anticipation note. Need a second? Questions, concerns, discussion?
So I'd like if Mr. Silver could explain what this resolution is, please.
Sure. So a number of years ago, the board voted to allow the board president the authority to borrow money if the board president deemed it appropriate. Meaning that it did not require the entire board after that resolution, if the board wanted to borrow. It would be up to the board president. And it was determined in discussions that perhaps this isn't such a good practice, that it would be better that the whole board was involved anytime we wanted to borrow, rather than the board president having that authority. So what this resolution does is just to rescind that resolution, which was done two or three years ago, but which was a 10-year-long resolution. So this ends that. And if the district, if the board should decide to borrow at some later date, it would require the entire board to have a vote in public to do that at the time they wanted to borrow.
Thank you very much. I think the whole board should have consent in borrowing and not just one individual, not just the board president. So, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 9.2, Certification of Uncollected Taxes for 2223 Tax Rule. Motion.
Second question.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can we have an explanation exactly what this is? In something simple, like crayons, something?
Sure. The 2223 tax year is over. It ended June 30. We agreed with the controller, some of the board members were present when we met with the controller recently. We determined that we were waiting before we turned it back over to the city to start the two-year clock for the city to be responsible for paying us all the. the two-year clock for the city to be responsible for paying us all the taxes that we have not collected. At that time, the controller agreed that they did not really have the capacity to collect the old taxes, and we, and the board had previously said that we would want to try to collect as much as we could on our own, rather than having it go to the city and then perhaps be in the same predicament we are with other money. So this is, this starts the two-year clock for the 22-23 school year. So that, that's when the city has to pay back. They have two years to make us whole, but they're required by statute each month when they collect this money, any money they collect during this two-year period, they're supposed to turn over to us on a monthly basis. And we did just receive some checks from the city this week when we got our big check per our agreement.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 9.3, Authorization to Approve an Increase in Hourly Rate for Per diem Secretaries in the District.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
I just have one question. Was it in the budget that we were going to do this, do this increase? Or are we going outside of what we already had in place that was approved?
The, the number of clerical people that this applies to is very, very limited. We're talking about a small hourly rate increase for per diem people. We have to have a secretary in every building. Remember, a number of years ago, the board decided to go from two secretaries in a building to one secretary in a building, but there has to be someone. And so if that person is out and we don't have extra staff, this is, so my point is, this is very limited in what it is. We're talking about a very small amount of money, and so it's not a budget concern because it's so small. Doesn't happen often. It's just so that we can get people when we need them. And the state, yeah.
Yeah, the minimum wage went up, yeah. Yeah, minimum wage went up also for the state, yeah. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 9.4, Accept a Donation of Two $500 Gift Cards from Ms. Anne Marie Attori for the Cecile H. Parker School.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 9.5, Accept a Donation for Girls' Flag Football Team.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 10.1, Authorization to Enter into a Contract with One World United and Vittorius to Provide Services to the CTE Department.
Motion.
Second question.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Just something simple, what services, which we, are we expecting them to provide?
Okay.
This is the consultancy that we were referring to earlier. Lisa Yokana is providing systems design training. Our consultant, Lisa Yokana, who worked with the school last year, is providing systems design thinking based on the Stanford model to the entrepreneurship classes, and that's overseeing the pedagogy of this project that I mentioned earlier, the house the time forgot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion for 11.1, Enter into Executive Session for the Purpose of Discussing Pending Litigation, the Financial History of a Particular Person or Corporation, or Matters Leading to the Appointment, Employment, Demotion, Discipline, Suspension, Dismissal, or Removal of Particular Person or Corporation, and to Receive Legal Advice on a Pending Matter.
Second.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm so sorry. Can I have first?
Who motioned?
Oh, wait.
Well, I'm a motion.
Can I, wait. Can I have a motion, please? Start over.
Motion, motion.
Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
All cabinet members must stay two hours more. But I do need Ken Silver, Mark Ramondi, and Noel Campbell. Thank you. And I just want to say, I just want to say good night to everyone, and we will not be coming back after executive session. Thank you so much, and get home safely.